I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Board Secretary, this meeting has advocated the closing of the public media.
Yes, it has, Mr. McEnroe.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Valka.
Here.
Mrs. Backto.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Riquilla.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
And Mr. McEnroe.
I'm present. Close, please.
This evening enclosed the Board of Education discussed under attorney-client privileges, State Board of Examiners, SCA tenure charges, SCA grievances, under negotiations, the SCA contract, under student discipline, HIB reports 33 through 38, 2012-13, personnel gender item D4.
Thank you. Dr. Alfondo, have a presentation this evening.
It gives me a great pleasure to make this presentation. And I know how hard this is to do, and I want to congratulate all the boys and the staff for another tremendous football season. I coached football for ten years on a high school level. Never got as far as one elite championship. And I don't think anybody really knows how difficult it is to win three in a row, state championships, Group Four, and I'm telling you, good Group Four schools, and go thirty-three and three in those three years, as well as be undefeated and state champs for Group Four this year. I also would like to say to the coaching staff, I want to congratulate the coaching staff, Mr. Brown, but I would like to especially make note of Coach Najjar. Last year, Mr. Brown unfortunately was injured, actually had to get his knee done. He was out for five months. Kind of a team player, Mr. Najjar, as he jumps in, becomes a vice principal for five months. Think he really loved that, and he enjoyed it, and I enjoyed it. And I never really had a chance to publicly thank him for his time. But that's the kind of guy he is. That's the type of man that these youngsters, that are these young men, are really learning from. So without further ado, I'm going to ask the coaches come up with Mr. Brown and Mr. Najjar, and I would ask that Mr. Najjar, Coach Najjar, please introduce his team. The team come up as well, we'd like to take a picture if we could of everybody. And again, I want to congratulate everybody but Mr. Najjar. You're at the floor right now, and we have a resolution when you're done.
Coach?
Thank you, Dr. Alfondo. On behalf of the coaching staff and the football players, and of course, Mr. Brown, our principal, would like to thank you for having us here this evening and honoring us. We feel a virtue which to be here, and we've earned virtue to represent this town and everything that we do. Three of our four captains are here, I'd like to introduce them to you. Senior captains Brian McMahon, Senior Captain Michael Carey, and Junior Captain Dion Villa. And quickly introduce you to the players that are here because I think they do deserve to be acknowledged. Starting on the far end, of course, our favorite hot dog guy in town, Tommy Engel. You shouldn't underestimate the importance of Tommy's role on the sidelines during the game. He's very valuable to us. He really has great control of the sidelines, and he's a valuable part of our staff. Manny Vargas, Brandon Rafe, Patrick Burner, Walter Gomwieski, Mark Maroon, Justin Gallagher, Anthony Sasso, Chris Ryan, Senior Running Back Zeke Parkinson, Matt Quatton, softball sensation Miles Horsfield, Junior Isaiah Coates, Junior William White, and of course, Coach Novak. That's our staff.
Coach, it's an honor to have you come here again, three times in a row. And I'll tell you, it's boring on Friday evenings, so wait for the season to come. We have a resolution that we want to provide you, and I'll just read it. It says, "Whereas the Sable Board of Education encourages extracurricular activities for our students, and whereas it has come to this board's attention that the Sable War Memorial High School football team had an undefeated season, has been named Central Jersey Group Four State Champions for three years in a row, 2010, '11, and '12, and whereas this Board of Education is extremely proud of those students, athletes, for their dedication and perseverance to excel, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Borough of Sable, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey hereby commends and honors the Sable Bomber Football Team for outstanding accomplishments during the season. And be it further resolved that this board encourages all student athletes of the Sable public schools to follow the example of these remarkable student athletes who strive to be the best that they can be. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution executed by the superintendent, president, and the business administrator, board secretary, on behalf of Sable Board of Education, be presented to the Sable War Memorial High School Bomber Football Team at the regular meeting of the Board of Education this fifth day of February 2013." Also, I want to mention one thing about Coach Najjar. And I've been familiar with the coach since he was a teacher, one of my students, one of my daughters, actually, and she was one of my students. The coach is a very modest individual, and you know, that certainly falls in line with the commitment and character. And the coach has also been named the New Jersey State Football Coach of the Year, which is very appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, everybody. Do we not need to get a picture of everybody? Maybe we can, Ms. Brady, you can set them up.
How do you want to say it, the board is?
They're bigger than me, so I can stand at the front. I can stand, I'm not going to get in anybody's way.
Everybody wants to get a picture.
Everybody that's on the board.
Come on, where would you like to sit?
Come on in front.
The board is a shield.
Come on, we're good, we're good.
No, that's right, all right.
Are we blocking you?
Just a little bit more.
Yeah, they're bigger than you.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if she can't, if you can't see her, she can't see you.
Mr. Syak, I cannot see you.
Move in, Mr. Syak, come on, sneak in.
There we go.
I'm going to take two, just wait one second.
Ms. Brady, make sure we get one.
Patrick, right.
Ready, one.
Right.
There you go. Two. One, two. Three.
All right.
So you can take a count of them.
I took like ten of them, so one might be enough.
And let's not forget the managers that help out and the cheerleaders because they're also a very important part of the football team. So again, thank you, Coach, and players, and Mr. Brown, good job, coaches. And we expect to be and see you back here next year.
Excellent. Okay, approval of the minutes. Everybody should have seen a copy of the minutes of the regular and executive session of January 22, 2013. It was posted. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or amendments to the meeting minutes? If not, accept a motion to accept the filed minutes. Need a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Valka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backto.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
I will abstain, I was in Boston for work.
Thank you. Mrs. DePinto. Mr. Riquilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp. And Mr. McEnroe.
Yes.
Student Council Representative, you got the pictures from Mexico?
Oh, yeah, no.
What's happening?
Student Council is currently preparing for the King of Hearts competition, which is our Valentine's Day fundraiser. Furthermore, in anticipation for the new semester, students received updated schedules today, and we are all anxiously awaiting the end of midterms. And I was also wondering if you guys received the letter that one of the senior girls wrote to you guys in regards to exemption for finals.
No.
I'd like to see that letter.
No.
Oh, yeah, I think Mr. Brown should have it. I'll probably ask him.
Thank you, Tom. Parent involvement representative, I guess we can talk about the pick meeting when we get to the committee court. Want to hear from you about the pick, unless you want to do it now, who do you want to do it now?
We could do it now. We had a meeting last night, and we had about ten parents come. And we had about ten parents come, and Mrs. DeSantis was there doing her presentation, as well as Mr. Lockmore helping out with the parent link, parent portal.
Portal.
Yes. And we tried to convince a couple of parents to come up, but they were a little reluctant. So hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have a parent come and represent. And it was a good meeting, so, thank you.
What percentage of parents do we have registered to the portal system that actually have? Do you know that? I know that was plotted and planned, right, to get some people registered at that meeting?
We did get a few new registered people signing up for it last night. The last figures I have are probably about six weeks or so old, but the unique user logins, which is basically how many people have actually logged in to it, was, I think overall, it was about twenty-five percent for the entire district.
Which is, yeah, which is, we're trying.
Right, so we're trying, we want to try to get word out there.
Is that twenty-five percent of the parents of students? Like, if you have, like, three students, like, would you say twenty-five percent?
It would be twenty-five percent, I believe, of the, of the parents.
Yeah, because you'd have their login.
Or, no, no, twenty-five percent of the students because each student has.
Each student has a different, so if I had four students, so I have four logins?
No, no, you can't combine them, you can't link them once you log in the first time.
And actually, we also did discuss last night about whether or not we want to move the election, what the parents' opinion on moving the election to November. And so we had more people that were interested in moving it, and we also put an informal poll out there with friends and just parents that we were familiar with on the street, and most of them also were in favor of moving the election to November, so.
So what, you said something you wanted to add?
A question about the portal, is that just for this year? What about people that were logged in last year, like, were there?
That's just for this year.
So people that were logged in last year wouldn't be counted in that number?
Correct.
So it actually could be higher?
No, no, it's ones who have actually, it's not so much people that. Twenty-five percent of the students' parents this year have gone on to check the parent portal. So parents signed up last year, it's not the number of people that got passwords and signed up. It's the last year, it's the number of people who have actually logged in and used it.
Do you have that split by high school and middle school and elementary?
Yes, yes, yes.
Where's the higher percentage?
The higher.
The high school, wasn't it?
The high school is the higher percentage, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the elementary percentages are really quite low. If you'd like me to, I can have all the, I can get updated figures for the next meeting.
I think, you know, this would have been a tool I would love to add, you know.
Right.
And I don't know, do the parents understand that they have access to their students' grades and assignments and what's pending and all these kinds of things? How do we get that word out? I mean, what can we do?
At back-to-school nights, teachers talk about it.
Yeah, but you've got to come to back-to-school night, so that's the other problem.
Right, but more than, I think more than twenty-five percent of parents come to back-to-school night, so, you know, we're not even going for those.
Now, I know, I know the whole idea of this was reduce paperwork and all that type of thing, but did we ever send a letter out initially to the parents, say, we have this new system now?
Yes.
And we did that initially, right?
Yes.
And we still haven't seen an increase in the.
My suggestion was if we cut back on the progress reports.
If we put it.
That the only ones getting the progress reports are the ones that are maybe in danger of failing or with the lower grades, because I think that might encourage people to log on, too.
Aren't those the only ones who get progress reports now?
No.
Typically, unless a parent simply requests?
It depends on the teacher and things. Not everybody gets one, everybody gets one.
Everyone does now, okay.
I mean, that's something we could look into doing to see if.
Who we're trying to prevent is if a kid fails and then the parent says, well, I didn't know if we have access to that.
Right, right, but we do still have, if we know parents aren't logged on, we can't make that be our only.
I understand.
For the kids in danger of failing, so perhaps for students who are in danger of failing, if they get mail home, and for other parents, it's only available on the portal. I can talk to Mr. Lockmore and see.
Maybe a letter that says, "This is your last progress report unless your grades are low, and please check the parent portal where your child's progress."
I know, and some people, they only send report cards on the portal as accessible.
Do we think any of it's related to the number of, like, for example, our demographic in this community and the people who have access to a PC at home on a regular basis?
I think, I would certainly think we have a lot more than twenty-five percent who have access.
Well, that I would agree with.
I think our number that do not have PCs at home is probably relatively small.
Can access it on your phone.
Right. I mean, really, and one of the parents last night, who was there last night, who talks about, she said, "Oh, it's great, I get emails every Sunday night, between Sunday night and Monday morning." She gets an email every week with the update. But she was someone who, even apparently last year she had signed up to get the updates, but she wasn't sure, she forgot how to go in on her own in between those updates. So Mr. Lockmore worked with her on getting her set up for that, so.
Anything else on that? District highlights?
They are lengthy, and I've been rehearsing the names. And by the way, we read them because we're on television, so the students get recognition on TV as well. The annual National Geography Bee was held on February 1 at the middle school. There was one student representing each of the seventh and eighth grade social studies teachers' classes. The format consisted of five preliminary rounds of twenty questions, with the highest two scores advancing to the final round. The finalists pitted last year's defending champion Kyle Cruz against Robert Adams, a seventh grader representing Mrs. Kraft. After three tough questions, Adams was victorious. This is the second year in a row that the winner of the bee was a seventh grader. Congratulations to Robert and all the participants, as well as the organizers, Mr. Alexander, Mrs. Char talk, Mr. Mullens, Mr. Bloom, Mrs. Kraft, Mr. Tiska, Mr. Humland, and Mr. Bowringer on a job well done. We are delighted to inform you that seventy-two Serebale Deca students attended the NJ Deca Regional Competition on January 8, 2013, and won a total of seventy-six awards. The following students won awards in their chosen business and technical event areas and are now eligible to compete at the NJ State Deca Conference in February 2013. Ashley Perez, Accounting Application, first place overall. James McCauley, Business Law Team, first place overall. Role Play, first place. Test, third place. Andrew Skariakos, Business Law Team, first place overall. Role Play, first place. Javed Shah, Financial Analysis Team, first placed overall. Test, first place. Role Play, second place. William Sit, Financial Analysis Team, first place overall. Role Play, second place. Melissa Tanchenko, Food Marketing, first place overall. Food Marketing, Test, first place. Role Play, two, second place. Monica Torres, Hotel and Lodging Management, first place overall. Role Play, one, first place. Role Play, two, second place. Malina Das, Restaurant and Food Management, first place overall. Role Play, one, first place. Role Play, two, first place. Vikrant Singh, Accounting Application, Test, first place. Shivam Dalal, Accounting, Role Play, two, first place. Michael Gallo, Principles of Finance, Test, first place. Tiffany Ing, Travel and Tourism, Test, first place. Shivam Patel, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, second place overall. Test, second place. Bahumi Patel, Business Finance, Test, second place. Ankur Kadakhia, Principles of Business Management, Test, second place. Ronak Shah, Accounting Application, second place. Accounting Applications, third place overall. Keisha Coleman, Buying and Merchandising, third place overall. Role Play, third place. Siddharth Chatterjee, Buying and Merchandising, third place overall. Role Play, third place. Lubna Khan, Financial Analysis Team, third place overall. Role Play, third place. Ashina Desai, Financial Analysis Team, third place overall. Role Play, third place. Christopher Khan, Hotel and Lodging Management, third place overall. Anuj Tavar, Principles of Business Management, third place overall. Dante Golden, Quick Serve Restaurant Management, third place overall. Xena Shah, Accounting Application, Role Play, one, third place. Accounting Application, fourth place overall. Shitan Patel, Accounting Applications, Role Play, two, third place. Pooja Upadhyay, Hotel and Lodging Management, Role Play, one, third place. Mina Sayed, Human Resources Management, Role Play, two, third place. Overall, fourth place. JC Holmes, Hospitality and Tourism, Professional Selling, third place overall. Test, third place. Role Play, second place. Joseph Muniz, Retail Merchandising Series, Role Play, two, third place. Sonia Parik, Travel and Tourism, Role Play, third place. Keshu, Keshubu, Jasani, Travel and Tourism, Role Play, third place. And the other top ten winners were Jade Desai, Sophia Butt, Srishdi Bellwarrier, Sijal Kapadia, Aditi Farsaya, James Vasulo, Sarah Rubio, Parth Patel, Zohal Shah, Chloe Boyce, Regina Mako, Ernest Holmes, Brittany Kakushka, Paige Gallagher, Christopher Henderson, and Tulsi Rajah. Congratulations also to Victoria Peridis, a Serebale War Memorial High School senior, a Serebale War Memorial High School and student in Ms. Catherine Moshe's Jewelry One class for receiving an honorable mention award from the Northern New Jersey Scholastic Arts Association for a mixed metal ring she has created. There were over three thousand four hundred entries in the contest, making this a very impressive achievement. Even more impressive is the fact that the winning piece was created by a first-year jewelry student. Congratulations to both Victoria and Ms. Moshe's for an outstanding accomplishment.
That concludes the district highlights. And that was the reason, I think, the state competition is in February for Deca, so they have a pretty good set.
Correct. So all of those, I believe all of those will be in it.
Dr. Alfondo, do you please take us to your superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. McEnroe. Okay, A, Buildings and Grounds. There were two resolutions, a baseball camp and the San Soro Elementary School is going to host a Girl Scout Cookie Rally. Any questions with those two resolutions? I'm sorry, there were some more. And this one I will defer to Ms. Eichner, which our six-month HIB summary report.
Okay, we're required twice a year to report on the number of confirmed HIB incidents, and this summarizes the period from July 1 through December 31, 2012. We had ten incidents that were investigated and confirmed as HIB incidents. And then it breaks down into the different categories, the nature of the incidents, the effect of the incidents, the mode of the incidents, the disciplinary action taken, the offender remedial actions taken, the victim remedial actions taken.
And for those who may be unfamiliar with the acronym HIB, it's harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eichner. Moving to Section B, Finance. Approve the donation of a flat-screen Dell monitor to the Truman School. The classroom is listed. And numbers two and two A, I'll defer to Mr. DeAndrea.
At the last board meeting, the board discussed advertising on the school stadium. Our board is looking for advertising to pay for the school board. There was also discussion about the front school sign. The unfortunate part is, depending on the direction tonight, depends on the resolution. If the solicitation is under thirty-six thousand, it's motion two. If you're going to go for something that's going to be over thirty-six thousand, it's going to be motion two A. So not knowing exactly where I was heading, I just put both on, so it's at the board's pleasure as to what we're looking to do. The board has to recognize, though, before I move forward, putting these solicitations out, there is no specific board policy at this point in time as to what advertisement is acceptable or not to the board. I spoke to Mr. Syak today to work on the policy committee, working on a specific policy as to what you would like and what is deemed acceptable advertising versus what is not acceptable. I've shared an example with him, which we keep as an agreement with. So before I can even put this out, I asked the board to establish a board policy so that those that solicited know exactly the guidelines that they have to abide by when we reform. So, as I said, resolution two is if we're only looking to do something under thirty-six thousand.
How do we know what it would cost? How do we know what it costs what?
Well, what I'm getting back is the scoreboard at the athletic field is roughly around twenty-five to thirty thousand. So that would be two. If you're going to include any other boards, then it would be two A at that point, because it would be over the thirty-six thousand, because I don't think any other scoreboard is going to come in. Any other sign is going to come in at five thousand dollars or so at that point.
What does it cost us to put it out as a two A? Does it cost us anything?
No, it's an advertisement in the paper. Yeah, it's the format, it's the format in which you put it out and the specifications that go with it.
Do you do two separate ones, individual signs?
No, because they're over the thirty-six thousand. You're doing like-kind things, so you have to bundle them.
It'd be like issuing two purchase orders to avoid the bidding process.
Would that twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand be for all the sports? Or would that only be?
No, that would be in all the.
It would cover all the different sports that are there? Soccer.
The original sign in front of the high school, what did that cost to have that electronic discount put in?
I do not know exactly, but I believe it was around twenty-five thousand dollars.
I was going to say, I was going to say thirty, so maybe between twenty-five and.
But that was a good eight years ago, I believe.
I know, that was, Dennis was here, so it's about ten years, nine years. It's right when it came.
My concern, I think, with.
That wasn't my son.
Right, and just to, just to remind everybody that that sign was paid for by student funds. It was not paid for by the board of ed. It was paid for by leftover senior class funds. I bet Mr. Brown had come up with that idea. Which was a good, I'm sorry, which was a good idea until it kind of backfired.
Would it make sense to get an estimate of what it would be to fix the existing sign versus replacing it?
I think, I believe what we discussed at the last meeting is the company that we purchased the sign from is basically out of business, and they were out of Florida. Anytime we needed services, people had to come up from Florida and things of that nature. I believe the cost estimate that Dennis received that one time to replace, and I'll call it the guts of the board, it's up, was around fifteen thousand dollars. It was more of a retrofit at that point in time.
So the fact that we're going out with, to include both signs, and the fact that we're trying to do the sign outside jeopardizes us doing the scoreboard quickly.
Well.
Yes or no?
How long does that take? What do you mean?
Yes or no, is that a true statement?
No, when you say jeopardize.
Well, because of the threshold amount.
No, because it's just a type of bidding, that process, that's all. One allows me to do it as a true concession, the other one allows it to be done as a competitive bidding process. But I know, speaking with Mr. Syak today, he had some concerns about the front sign that he said he wanted to discuss this evening.
Yeah, I guess my concern about the front sign, I don't necessarily have an issue with the one with the stadium, you know, getting a Coca-Cola or a bank or whatever, you know, in a stadium. I don't know if I would want, "Welcome to Coca-Cola Serebale War Memorial High School" out front. I think I would want the front sign to just purely be Serebale War Memorial High School. And I'm not sure who's going to step up to give us money for a sign that they can't advertise on.
And also keep in mind, it's only, the advertisement is only good for five years.
So I mean, the back sign, there's an ascent, you know, they'll have their name up our stadium. There's two separate things, I'm thinking, is to get that sign up on the stadium, and we can do advertising there, and then let's figure out another way to repair or replace the sign out front, and not to combine it.
Well, I don't care about combining it, as long as, I just want to put, I want to put an RFQ or whatever it's called exactly, for the sign out front as well. I think that it.
I mean, if I do one now and do another one several months from now, I mean, we can do it that way, see? I mean, I can't really, I just.
You're on TV.
No, but I'm just saying, I think the key is, first find, first find if you can get someone, get someone to do your sign in the back.
Doing it for the sign out front, because I agree with Mr. Syak, the only thing we want on that sign out there to say is say, "Welcome to Saro War Memorial."
Right, but that's what I'm saying, separate the two. First find out if you have a viable person out there that's even willing to do the back sign.
I was gonna say, find out.
The key is, is you put it out, you find out, and I mean, if they're asking someone for thirty thousand dollars for advertising for only a five-year period, I'm not sure how successful or not it will be. So, get that out of the way, since that is the primary focus, and then let's, then put out another one, and then determine how you want that front sign to be, if an advertisement is gonna be used at that point in time. Because I think putting together two signs into one and saying, "Well, we'll allow you to advertise on this sign, but we're not gonna allow you to advertise on this one," may detract people from saying, "Well, why would I be interested in doing that?" And maybe figure out a different course of action, and you can use your front sign, maybe use it in the same manner, and afford them another type of advertisement, not on your front sign, but maybe another form of advertisement somewhere else in the building that you can do. But it's hard to determine those things until you have a board policy that's gonna tell you how much advertisement you're gonna allow and things of that nature.
I think what you could do now, if you look at the billboard on, when you're driving down the turnpike, if you buy an electronic sign, part of the electronic display may be Coca-Cola, because when you see those signs going through, there's advertisement as it goes through. It's not on the sign, but it might run through, and that might be something. But I agree with Amedio, let's get the one sign out, you're mixing and matching here. You know, let's take a couple of months, figure, let's see if anybody's interested in the one sign. If nobody's interested, chances are, nobody's gonna be interested in the front sign.
And I do like that approach for the back sign, is the back sign as well, because then after five years, if the sponsor doesn't re-up, we can go with someone else without incurring a huge cost to redo the sign.
And I think that's why you do it. I think that's why you do it, you could put multiple people on that, especially the scoreboard, you could put multiple people on it at halftime, it could just be running through. So, you know, that might be something that they're interested in doing. I mean, the way they are right now, the way it is perfected, you could do almost just about anything on the sign.
Yeah, and just so the board knows, I've asked Mr. Coetan and Mr. Brown to get, put together the exact signs that they're looking for, so that when these specifications do go out, whoever's bidding on it or competing for it is not gonna say, "Well, I'll give you this sign, and someone else is giving a different one." I am specifically put into the package, the sign that we want with the design, and the hope is, is to tell them where their advertisement is also gonna be and what size, so that no one is guessing as to, well, how big is it, how small. I'd like to be able to give them all the specifications, so they know exactly what they're putting in there, so that they know what it is. So, I don't have either one of those back at this point in time either.
So, what are you asking for us tonight?
I recommend do two, not two A. And so that way, you can still explore your front sign, because I don't know if you have consensus right now for that front sign, and I don't wanna jeopardize.
Wouldn't we need the policy before we do that?
I'm okay with this, because I'm not gonna move forward until I have the policy, because that's gonna be in the specifications also. I mean, the board discussed it at last meeting, I worked with the attorneys, got it ready. Passing it, I can start putting together the specs, the requirements, and then once the policy's passed and everything, I can solicit, put it out on the screen as well as.
Mrs. McInerney, last week you mentioned that those two figures were in the budget, because that's.
No, actually, I hate to throw a monkey wrench, but there was a third sign in the budget.
Yes.
The indoor scoreboard, which hasn't been addressed. Like, if we're gonna do the outdoor sports board, I think we should come up with it with the indoor scoreboard. Is there a problem with the indoor? Then do in the front, I would rather do the two sports boards.
So, a problem with the basketball sports?
I know it's in the budget, I don't recall what Mr. Coetan said.
It looked good to me tonight, when I was out there watching the game. Was it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I remember what Mr. Coetan said, it was something to do with the controller. Was that the one when he mentioned the controller doesn't correctly work at that point? I believe that.
I've heard him say that before, and I still haven't seen that.
I believe that's the indoor one, that the parts have become an obsolete and thing of that nature. I mean, I mean, folks, you can go on and on with signs at any point, I mean, your scoreboards, so it's a decision you have to make as to how many you wish to do, and that determines what.
Okay, we leave the indoor one in the budget for now, and then work on this and see how we get a bite on this?
It got cut last night.
It got cut last night?
We're struggling here, really.
Yes, Mr. Bishot.
One of the issues, I read both of these over, and one of the things that bothers me about this is that if we're going to go out, we've gotta put restrictions on here. First of all, we don't wanna have an alcohol-type of thing, we don't wanna have something like a go-go bar.
Oh, I think.
But that's the policy.
That's the policy.
That's why I'm asking to make sure the policy gets established first.
And then the policy would go out with the specs, so they know.
Absolutely, so they know clearly that some of those.
You know, that's what we have to be careful of, of not having something that could be offensive or misleading.
I agree. So, when are you gonna have a policy ready, Mr. Syak?
We can probably have one for the next meeting. My question to the board is, obviously, as Mr. Bishot indicated, sex, drugs, alcohol, and anything that's inconsistent with the overall mission of the school district should be prohibited. Is there anything else that the board has in specifically in mind that I haven't mentioned, that they wish to prohibit?
I'm certain this district's out there with current policy.
Correct, I just, I just wanna make sure there's nothing else specifically on the board's mind that I need to be aware of before we go about doing this. But we can call school boards and get some sample policies.
Yeah, I mean, I think common sense should prevail here, what's acceptable, a hardware store, it's Coca-Cola, you know. If it's Jack Daniels, that might be a problem, I agree.
Got it.
And what I'll do in the meantime, is I'll work with Mr. Pantriano to see if there's any way we can possibly salvage that front door at a minimal cost, and see if there's any, I know we've worked with one guy that's been down here, and see if there's maybe an old board sitting somewhere else that someone left that fits within the parameters, and maybe make use of it in that way, and see if there's another measure. I mean, I hate to see that scoreboard, that sign up there really just be abandoned, because we can't get service for it, so I'll explore more with Mr. Pantriano.
So, are we removing two A?
Two A should be, we'll, we'll.
Is anybody?
Two A is not, is withdrawn.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that? Is that fine?
I guess this just goes back to my original question from the last meeting. So, does the board want the front sign in the budget? I was at a question in the last meeting, we were gonna take the signs out of the budget. Now, I'm not so sure. I would say take it out, and let's explore this and see what we can do. It's been like this now for a couple of years, it's one more year. I agree with that. I just wanna make sure that was.
Okay, you got your direction, Mr. Wood Sekter. Dr. Afan.
Okay, moving to page seven, number three, this is part of our security upgrade, which is the data card photo ID system. And number four is a four, five, six, our cancellation of checks that have miscellaneous revenue, et cetera, to try to balance out our accounts as the audit basically came through. And then seven is a donation, two thousand dollars, Mr. and Mrs. Ashley, which I would like to publicly thank, creation of Title I mathematics position with additional money. Actually, it's not additional money, it's a rollover money that we have to spend before the end of this year, and this is only for this year. Number ten is the appointment of Joe Burcom as a part-time school psychologist until we get a full-time psychologist to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Any questions with section B?
I have a question on the photo ID system, did we go out for quotes, or where did we get that?
I brought in, I brought in two separate firms that were recommended from our, our specific budget software that we use, budget personnel software, they recommended two companies that, I guess the best way is synchronized with their system. The Toshiba product, when we met with the representative, their product seemed to have a lot more capabilities than the other, and I say product, their software package, it has the capability to expand if we wish to do a time and attendance mechanism, so that if we move forward with proximity cards in our buildings, the cards, you can issue ID cards that have their proximity right on there, and you can use it as a time and attendance mechanism to, instead of people signing in, they walk by the proximity, they're in, when they leave, they're out, you have time and attendance. They had a unique feature that if we ever wanted to go to an emergency management plan, their product is currently being used by all twenty-one counties for emergency management. If you have an emergency management situation and you have responders from different areas, and each responder has their specialty, they actually, they have a software and a barcode system that as people show up to respond, they scan in and specifically give their credentials. I don't believe we're ever gonna get there, but knowing that they have that capability, the Toshiba product, I believe, will give us the opportunity to expand as we change and modify our security measures. The both plans, we're able to use the proximity, but theirs has a lot more features involved in it.
And that's gonna service the entire district, every school? Is this for every school?
The goal is, is to issue an ID card to every staff member in the district that is identical, but we can make modifications by school, so that if you want to do them by school name, staff position, there's a lot of unique things you can do, but there'll be a uniform ID card, hopefully, for the start of the next school.
And he's unlocked the doors?
No.
Yeah, this is just.
But the nice part is, either product, either company, you buy the special card from the manufacturer of the security system you have, and the card, your ID card becomes your swipe card also. You just have to redo them at that point.
And that just gets you into your school, not any school?
Depending on the coding of the security system, yes, you can do it that way.
Okay, moving to C, personnel certified, there's only three resolutions, there's a part-time, professional, professional base, and substitutes. Moving to D, personnel certified, there's a couple of, three pregnancy leaves, and number four, there was a change, the Board of Education's requested to approve retro actively the following certificated staff and cross out as advisors, so it's just certificated staff for peer leadership at the Saro War Memorial High School, effective, please cross out, September one, two thousand and twelve, effective for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year, stipend of twelve hundred and fifty hours each, and those names is listed. I wanna thank DuPont for number five, once again, they're sponsoring two of our teachers to go to San Antonio for this year's science teachers convention. They do this every year since I've been on the board, and it's a really, really nice thing that they do each year. There's also a pregnancy charter amendment, which is also listed, a few teachers that are being employed, and professional base is listed on pages ten, eleven, and twelve, and the substitute list on page twelve. Any questions with that section B? With none, moving to policy, that was the, which we discussed, that Mr. McInerney read to the three P football champions. Moving to F, curriculum, those are our harassment, intimidation, bullying reports, thirty-three through thirty-eight. There's also an approval of the nursing services plan for the district, special services resolution is listed on page fourteen. Any questions on that section? Moving to G, co-curriculum, there are quite a few school functions in Wilson, Eisenhower, Saro Middle School, as well as Truman School, and Saro War Memorial High School, all of it. There's also a tag trip to Boston, as well as the creation of the yoga club. And finally, Angelina Marino will be the volunteer advisor for that club. Any questions with that section? Which, with none, moving to H, support services, these are the transportation waiver as outlined, and there are approximately fifteen trips that will be approved as noted, and if you move to page eighteen, number three, this is the high school winter guards' schedule as noted, and Mr. McInerney, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Many poor discussions in general, I will open up for the public. Seeing none at this time, I might open up to the public for any questions or comments on agenda items only, I will open up to the public again for any business that are able to come before the board. This time, any questions on the agenda for the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, I'll entertain a vote to accept and file the superintendent's report. Ready in a second?
Section.
Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Bafta.
Yes.
Mr. Bafta.
Yes.
Mr. Bishot.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. Rucuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Pratt.
Yes.
And Mr. McInerney. Yes. Mr. Syak, delegate to New Jersey School Boards Association, what's happening?
Two items, first of all, an update I received from New Jersey School Boards Association today, that there are fifty-three remaining districts that have chosen to keep the election in April, another twelve have moved since the last time that we spoke. None of them have been in middle six counties, the, all the ones that have moved have been in other parts of the state. The other piece to report on is, last week I was in Washington, DC, as part of National School Boards Federal Relations Networking Conference, we met with our congressman and in most cases their aides, because we did not get to meet with the congressman themselves, regarding educational issues, in particular, sequestration, and also IDEA funding for special education, because IDEA is authorized by Congress to be funded for forty percent of special education costs, however, they actually only fund at seventeen percent, because that's all they appropriate. One of the scary things, though, is as you meet with the aides, first of all, we found that most of them really did not know what was going on, and we spoke about a two percent property tax cap, we had to define exactly what that was, they had absolutely no idea what that meant, so they really didn't understand the pressure that we were under from that perspective. And the other distinct feeling that we got in meeting with all of them is that education is simply another line item in the budget, there is no real strategy for education, there's no priority for education, all of their focus is going to be on immigration reform, we heard about that, we heard about sequestration, we heard about the budget, we heard about the debt, but there was nothing about a comprehensive plan for public education. So, that part was very disappointing. And that's all I have to report.
And that was the reason the conference was held?
Yes.
Welcome to DC.
Exactly.
Okay, committees, the pick we heard from, any other committees meet?
Finance.
Mr. Ball.
We're moving in the right direction, I think, we made some cuts, we added some teachers, though, and, but the biggest thing is, the administration's asking for direction from the board on like three items, they're looking for direction on redistricting, security, and a hundred thirty credits for seniors, because they need to know, if they have questions, they want the questions answered to like the budget properly for now, because we keep putting teachers in the budget for like a hundred thirty credits, and somehow they get taken out of high school and put other places and stuff, so. How's, in the direction of the security, they're talking, instead of doing a separate question, they're leaning towards reserve and capital reserve money at the end of the year, and using that money to do the security issues.
How much money are you talking?
As I explained last night to the finance committee, right now, this is such a new item out there, we have asked all the principals of the buildings to give us a layout of what they like in their buildings as far as security cameras, proximity cards, and things of that nature. We received all of them back today, we will meet with our architect and engineers tomorrow to give that to them. The concern that we have is that we may not put together a complete package to have in time for this budget, and I'm not sure the board is really on board as to what direction we're really gonna go forward, and to try and do all this in the timeframe of the next three weeks, I think it's an injustice to the board to say, "The next three weeks, this is our, this is our security plan, and you really didn't work through every aspect of it." I know last night, certain board members indicated they think the process is an overkill, and I apologize if I'm exaggerating the overkill part, but they thought it was too much, we didn't need to go to that level.
Too excessive?
Excuse me, yes, because what we're looking to do is, we're looking to make every elementary mirror what we're doing here at the high school and the middle school. So, the board really hasn't had lengthy discussion on that. We have a price tag, it could be close to three hundred, four hundred thousand, but until we really put it all together, what we did do last night is we agreed to keep a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to at least move forward with all the interior doors, so that they can lock from inside the classrooms through teacher. doors so that they can lock from inside the classrooms where the teacher doesn't go out. Using the money in the past, we've waited, we've put capital reserve to the side. That way, the board can plan and appropriately prepare for whatever security measures you have, and not try to jam it into the next two weeks of discussion. Allow it to be a more broader discussion and understand the plan that's going to be before you, instead of just saying, here's 300,000, and let's see what we get.
When are we going to get the estimates from the architect and their beast?
Again, I'm not meeting with them until tomorrow. We may get it back within a week. But again, is it a plan that the board is ready in a week to make a decision? This is the direction we want to go. I think it's more prudent to sit, examine it, and understand where you're going, because there may be things you like more in it or less, and to try and do that by March 5th gives us less than a month to do that. So, and it's a, it's a cost, but if you reserve it at the end of the year, then you can still move ahead with the project you want. And I also think you may see other methods come out, you may find some grants that come out that you can get on board and things of that nature, so.
Does anybody have any concern with that, that strategy? What was the question with the teachers? The curriculum committee made the conscious effort that we were going to go to 130 credits, right? And we added courses, and with that, we understood that there was going to be teachers added. I mean, that was going in. We knew that. So what's the issue with the teachers, I'm not aware?
We put four in last year at the high school, but they got taken on and used for special ed in other places. We're trying to put another four in this year, but we want to protect them, and we want to use them for, we want to use them for, not having it pulled out and used for other items.
Now, the ones last year was because of the special ed population issue, that happened after.
We think we, we think that we're not going to have, Phil's flapping, but we think we're not going to have any increases, I spoke to Pat.
Increases a lot.
In special education this year.
Oh, really? How much is our budget going up in that area?
Well, he means increases in teacher population.
Staff, I'm sorry, staff.
Not increasing the budget.
And tuition, the tuition to special education.
How much is the budget up, does that mean?
It's gone up a lot, yeah. So it's taking Peter to give the poll and vice versa. So if we're not putting personnel, it's getting hit.
Well, the point is, the curriculum committee, we did all this work, we come up with the schedule, and we need to have staff, and we understood that, and it needs to be reserved in the budget as high school dedicated staff. I mean, that's, does anybody have an issue with that?
No, that's how I understand.
We put it in, I mean, we have the four teachers in. You know, I asked exactly, matter of fact, I think we put in about six staff and maybe one tech, I'm not sure exactly how much we did.
Four high schools, one middle school, one elementary.
Right, so we tried to spread it out, so it wasn't just that we were putting it in one area, we'd spread it out. And we asked the supervisors where their greatest need in the high school was, and that's where we focused it. So you got seven people in the budget.
Is that answer?
We were planning for the elementary school.
Those are still off work with the 130 credits.
Yeah, absolutely. And what was the other issue? You had three.
Redistricting was the other concern, and I shared with the board. Right now...
Are we talking about the cost to upgrade Slover?
I don't, at this point, I don't know what direction. I can tell you.
Well, no matter what.
No matter what.
No matter what, we got to upgrade Slover.
Right now, I'm still moving forward, working with the, in-house staff, preparing the nine, the nine classrooms that are on my side of the building. Sir Dennis is moving ahead with his staff. Painting is basically done, we're ready to start the suspended ceiling and lighting, so we're moving. The bigger concern is, we need direction as to what we're doing as a district hall with redistricting. Are we, are we going to eventually still, are we looking to do Slover as a school? Are we looking to move K5 all the buildings?
We need to have, I dropped the ball on this when she asked me last week.
You didn't drop the ball on it, because Slover's going to be a school.
No, no, meeting, as far as, as far as, I agree with that. A meeting is, I would like to shoot for the, prior to the next board meeting.
With the administration.
With the administration.
Just let me know, just give a couple of takes.
Regardless, the whole idea of, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil is saying, who else was on the committee? Jill and Helen. The idea of getting Slover to be a functional school is to leave the overcrowding present, so that's irrelevant to whether they become K5s or KEs.
I agree. And currently, we have $600,000 in the budget to do phase two of the boiler. So we're going to move ahead with that. It's more or less the concern, at what time are we going to open up? How much money, how much of the upgrades are we looking to do in what time period? Because now there seems to be a difference in a timeline as to when we may need to actually make that a full functioning.
Well, that's got to be the top of the discussion.
Exactly.
All right, we'll get back to it.
See, Mr. Mackinon, again, with redistricting and Slover, first of all, taking into consideration the upgrades, besides the boiler and heating systems, you have to upgrade the cafeteria, you have to put an elevator in there for the handicap areas. And again, you know, the big number that we're going to face is the cost of staffing, to staff that facility. And that's going to be a recurring issue each year. And I'll be very honest, my opinion is, I think the smartest move is to go with the K through 5 throughout the district. It's going to be the cheapest, and that's...
Yeah, but I think before we make a decision like that, we have to consider what is costing. So let the redistricting committee...
At the next meeting, I have some numbers that I've ran of staffing that building, and I'll present them at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, Dan, so I'll leave that answer.
Sure, better.
I got you. Now, what is our timeline, I should note this, what is our timeline to get the budget finalized and submitted to the state?
It's right under discussion, March 5th.
Okay.
March 5th is our tentative, and March 26th is our adopted.
Nice, we have a little time now.
All right. One more question on the budget, and I don't know if this is for the finance committee or the curriculum committee or both. As we look at the 130 credits, when we were at 120, the max a student could typically graduate with would be 140, assuming they went full, a full eight-period day every single school year. If they did that, they could basically fail four courses and still be able to graduate with the run 20. Now that we're bumping it to 130, they can only fail two courses and still be able to graduate on time. Are we looking at making anything into the budget in terms of credit recovery options or distance learning, or?
Yes, they're, they're putting in, what the, Mr. Brown was looking at was credit recovery, and they're looking at APAC system, actually, to do that, the online recovery, so they can do credit recovery through the online courses.
And that's on them.
And that'll be, and that, well, that can be on them, because I know if we, I know if we offer like a summer school program, we have to allow our students to attend for free. If we do anything, we don't.
It depends on how they take it.
That's right. I mean, if you fail a class.
It depends on when they take it, how they take it.
Well, I think there's...
In answer to your question, it depends.
Thank you for that answer. We want, we want... I'm trying to respond to people.
We discussed this at the curriculum meeting, and that's why we have the APAC system. I mean, if you fail a class because you pummeled something, why are we paying for that?
Well, and that, and that I agree with, but you may have a segment of the population who may fail a class because they're legitimately struggling, and we should have some options available, because if a kid is legitimate...
Summer school.
Where are they going to go to summer school?
Mr. Syak, we're looking into all those options. That was something that the curriculum committee has looked into, and we're also, Mr. Brown and I are looking into all those options along with the supervisors. One of the things that we're trying to avoid is what we've had in the past, where students try to make up the credits, and we have no control of where they go and...
That's where I'm getting at.
Right, so this would eliminate that issue by going through a vendor that we're already using to do the, to do the AP courses, but not necessarily put it on us to run it. We can give them the option of, if you want to make the credit recovery, this is the company that we are suggesting, and...
And even if we paid for it, it's a lot less than if we had the curriculum in itself.
Okay, and when will that be finalized? I mean, we're going to have students already who are affected by that. And the other piece is, is that something that we need to include in the graduation policy that Mrs. Zeichner and I are working on in terms of credit recovery and the valid options?
Mr. Brown and I are working on it, so I will have it soon. I don't want to give you a specific date right now, but I will commit to a specific date right now. But I'll speak with Mr. Brown tomorrow, and I'll get the board a better date by our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's the current sophomore class, so you're not like that pressured for time.
Right, but if they're failing courses, they need to make it up, they're probably, they're probably failing them now, so they would need to start making them up now. We can't wait to see the year for that, for that piece.
Right, they would do that, and it just limits their electives in most activities.
Correct.
They do it within a school year. Now, I'm going by the policy of don't fail classes.
Again, I agree with that.
All right. To me, you got high school, you got one shot, you got four years, get out, make room for the rest. Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay. Advertising on school buses and school websites, what's that?
That's for me. And since the conversation's started with advertising on the field, there is now the availability to make money by advertising on school buses and on our website. Before I engaged in conversations with the consultants that have already been approved through the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Co-op, I figured I can talk to the board first, that way, if there's an interest, I'll have the meeting. If there's not an interest, no need to have a meeting. I know, I believe it was two or three years ago, we discussed it, and it was unanimous, the board didn't want to do anything on school buses, but now there's also websites, so.
It wasn't unanimous.
Well, I'm sorry. There wasn't, there wasn't five that wanted to do it.
Has anybody, has anybody seen an advertisement on a school bus? I haven't seen one.
I have not.
I don't know if I look at the buses, but I think the website is not such a bad...
I think the website are the possibilities.
I'll explore.
How much money are we looking at that you could raise from advertising on a website?
I really don't know, until I speak with the consultants. But what I'm hearing from my colleagues, they are seeing money come in on that.
APAC sounds like a revenue that they want to advertise.
Yeah, they would get quite some education.
But again, but again, I have to, but again, before I do anything, I do need the board policy so that I have the specific guidelines as to what you would allow as that advertisement.
And that would follow the same suit as the...
Yes, that's, the one policy we cover so that it's clear as to what, what is allowed or not, so that when I meet with the consultants, when they're putting together the solicitation for that and the revenue source, they know our specific guidelines. So I'll speak to them about school website, leave the buses alone together.
Is it the same consultant?
Yes.
Of advertising on it?
Yes, so if I was... Can't you just discuss both, if it's the same person?
Yeah, but if there's no interest in school buses, I...
Well, who, who is supporting, is okay with advertising on school buses?
Oh, I am, I am.
I'm okay. I'd like to see what it looks like before we're okay, you know, that's the thing.
Yeah, I can't envision what it would look like. How do you not cover up school buses or Savile, and I don't...
You have like a cat.
I have not seen one yet.
You guys should say what to do.
Clicks up on the top, you make it like the...
Take a vote, so we know the direction.
They're probably don't.
Or just that I can say, or just...
So, you're okay with it, Ben?
I'd have to see it. I can't even envision what that would look like.
Well, I'd say, I'm okay with it, but I want to see it first before we're okay, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm reluctant. I lean toward not allowing it.
No. Okay with the website, not the buses?
I'm fine with it.
Mr. Bass?
I'm okay.
I'm okay with it, but I just have a question for you. Have you seen any buses with this?
No, I have not.
So we'd be like the pioneers?
I'm not sure if we'd be the pioneers, but I have not seen one around in this area.
Well, we would see what it looked like before we thought about it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We could still not approve it. I mean, we could still say no.
This bus for you.
What, what do you, what's your...
I'd like to see, like Carl mentioned, about other districts within the state of New Jersey. I know there's some southern districts that do it, and the type of revenue that it can generate, if any.
So you have...
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, there's southern states and some states in Ohio, not states, districts in Ohio, Pennsylvania, that do advertise on their buses. I, I'm just curious of what the revenue generation is. Is it worth it? And again, you know, you're going to need a policy to restrict what you're going to have.
Well, I don't, to me, school buses are transport students, that's the same, I just don't see signs on them.
Based on the poll, I'll have, I'll engage in the same conversation with both.
I'm interested to see what people think about that. Okay, what's the next item here?
Next item is just so the board is clear, March 5th is the goal to adopt our tentative budget. State figure should be out in late February, which as usual gives us a quick timeline to turn around and adopt our tentative. And March 26th is the timeline where it fits into our schedule to adopt our final budget. And last night, the finance committee, the discussion was, we need on the 19th. Would you prefer to reschedule your March 19th meeting to 26th, or we're not meeting back to back?
Back to back.
It's a good meeting.
There was your suggestion, and I agree with Mr. Baupin, that's a good suggestion.
Mr. Syak, yes.
Well, nobody would come to the 26th meeting if we just had our left budget, so at least we'll have people here, too.
Makes sense. Okay.
Just so that you know, that's the last day before the vacation, so just not nobody here, but we have school at that.
Okay.
We have school at that.
Yeah, we, we put the...
Also, I guess that was a good idea.
Okay, so that's it, is there anything else?
Cancel three nights.
There's, there's where it's on TV where they advertise. So if you come around, we'll show you.
What sign TV is?
There's a sample of where they...
Sample of a bus. It's on the back.
It's coming around, Mark.
Yes.
Yeah, ticket's tomorrow, if you want.
Jay dot room.
Depends on how much you're going to give. Give me 10 grand. They can put a picture on my face.
No, we wouldn't do the contract.
Do we move the... Do you need a motion on that, or direction is fine? Okay.
Right.
This doesn't look right to me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Like Jersey Transit. All right. Okay, I heard some discussion earlier, somebody bringing up the budget, moving the elections in November, so I'll kick that dead horse in the...
One more time.
You've got another meeting you can do.
Now, I laid out some reasons why I think we should do it. I still think it's prudent, I think it's our responsibility to do it. We have the law on our side. I think it's reasonable with a 2%... What everybody said today, and I'll go back to this every time, Dan asked about, hey, you know, we're at six staff members, we're talking about extending this school year, credits to 130. I know technology is talked about, there's visions of upgrading technology, iPads in everybody's hand, and I'm saying to myself, where is this money coming from with a 2% cap? And then what happens if the budget's defeated and we lose a million or two? How does this get funded? So that's always been my motivation to protect the budget by moving the elections to November, and I still believe that that's something we should do. And I know, you know, some of us feel uncomfortable, it's controversial, but that's, to me, is what we're supposed to be doing. Those are the calls we're supposed to be making. It was once said about politics, that politics is the art of delaying a decision until it no longer is relevant. And I don't want that to happen, you know. I think this is something we need to revisit again, and I'll just throw that out there. Is there any discussion, or should I shut up?
I'm in the same spot that I was last month, I mean, nothing changed. I support moving it. And the only other thing I'll add that I heard since then is that from other board members that have moved the election, I heard it makes it much easier for the, for the administration to be able to actually plan to hire staff, and they actually end up getting higher quality staff because they can start putting those advertisements out earlier, rather than waiting for the budget to be finalized, whether that be in April or that be in May in the event of a budget defeat. And that was something that I didn't initially think of when we talked about this.
Did you talk to anybody from those 12 schools that just recently moved it?
No, I actually got that information from New Jersey School Boards. I didn't talk to them directly, and they told me that, you know, an initial 12 had moved.
Anybody else?
Well, I go with that it's reasonable to move it. I have mixed feelings on it, but I feel more strongly about moving it to November.
You were talking about something before about a poll and you talked with people.
Yeah.
Who's that?
I'm going to say that maybe it was 60 to 5. Now, I realize...
Is this a scientific poll?
No, no.
It's a shop, it's a shop, a shoprite poll.
Shoprite poll.
It was a little more sophisticated than the shoprite poll.
Well, it was, yeah. It was electronic. And, and I realized that, that I don't know who, I know some of the people that responded, but I don't know what their, what their full demographic is. But that is what I got back from them, is that...
This was a Facebook poll?
Facebook. It was between Facebook and last night. I didn't know how else to, you know, how else to put it out there. We've been asking, and I've been asking, you know, parents and...
It's Facebook, then you know exactly.
It's Donovan. We have proof.
Well, one of our biggest concerns was taking the vote away from people and their choice. And what I suggested last time was that we allow people to decide. So we put this poll out there and ask people, shine in April or November, and that's it. That's the choice. And it was two votes that I saw. It was two votes for April and 30 for November. And the comments were overwhelmingly, you're an idiot if you don't change it.
Now, now, when we asked this question, did they, did they understand that when you move to November, the budget's not voted on, the law's just putting 2% cap?
I'm not, I, it was out there. Do they understand? I don't know what someone understands, but it was... Do they understand, I don't know what someone understands, but it was out there, and it was discussion, and there were comments on it as well, is that, so, yes. Yeah, and I don't know what the latest numbers are, the last time I looked at it, it was thirty to two. Jill talked, I talked to a few people in addition to that, and that was my big concern, is what does the public really want? What does, because I hear some people here at the board meetings, not a lot, I wanted to know what else was out there, which is why I suggested that we put it on the ballot. So I knew it was gonna come up again for discussion, and said I need to get out there and really talk to people and count, I'm interested in data, you know that I do my research, and so that's what I did over the past week.
Anybody else?
That's who was my concern, what the people wanted. People voted for me, so then how would I say, well, now I would take your vote away? And that was one of my biggest concerns. Then I did, I did my research, I did my soul searching, and then I said, well, am I really taking the vote away? You're still voting for nine people who then you put your vote into making that budget. And then I thought about, well, you put your vote in me for the best of the children. Now, if I was going to do what was best for the children, would that be to make sure that budget passes by moving it to November? We are looking at curriculum, technology, security, overcrowding. So then, if I don't move it to November and the budget fails, then what do I say to the people? So that was the soul searching that I'm doing within myself.
I want to add to that, one of the things that I was asking myself over the past week especially was, am I doing this because I'm worried about the politics of me running, or what's going on in schools? And I know that it will make my life more difficult if I run in November, I think it will, it will be more expensive, it will be harder for me, but that shouldn't be my issue, and that shouldn't be my priority. So it would be easier for me to run in April, but I think that that doesn't matter, that's not what's important.
Dan? Dan, you have a big motion, I vote.
I make a motion to move Washington to November.
Well, hold on, I gotta open up the public, get public comment.
If I could, I've had the motion with me for the last couple of meetings, there is a formal resolution, the motion that you have, a resolution you have to read, so when you get to that one, just so the board knows, I have it with me for the last several meetings somewhere in there.
Probably had it since May.
Had it since last year.
Maybe it's a resolution.
And there's a formal resolution that the board must pass.
What's it say?
Here.
I don't know.
They both have.
Well, I guess really you have to make a motion and a second, then I would read it.
Well, we gotta open up the public.
Well, no, then you, then you go to the public after you do your motion, read it, so everybody knows what it is.
Yeah, but we're not gonna vote until we get comments from the public, I'm saying.
No, I know that, you do your motion, your motion, your second, you read it, then you open it up to the public, and then the board votes.
And I would like to say-
Because you need to know that there is a first and a second, to read it.
Okay, whatever.
Why don't you, why don't you read the resolution, and if someone feels inclined, make a motion in the second, if not, we all go home.
Board of Education has requested to approve the following resolution, whereas PL two thousand and eleven's chapter two oh two authorizes changing the date for the election of the school board members from the third Tuesday in April to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, the general election, and whereas such action requires the adoption of a resolution by the Board of Education or the municipality constituting the school district, and whereas PL two thousand and eleven, chapter two oh two requires that the changes, change to November election remain in effect for four years, and whereas PL two thousand and eleven, chapter two oh two eliminates the annual vote referendum on the proposed general fund tax levy in school districts where boards of education members are elected at the general election, and whereas PL two thousand and eleven, chapter two oh two requires that an additional general fund tax levy proposal for an expenditure in excess of the tax levy cap be presented to voters as a separate question in the general election. So just everyone is clear, that's only if you're going above the two percent, then you have to question in November. Now, therefore be resolved that pursuant to PL two thousand and eleven, chapter two oh two, one, the Sayerville Board of Education changes the annual election date for the school board members from the third Tuesday in April to the November general election beginning in, I wanna make sure, two thousand and thirteen, and, two, the annual organization meeting of the Sayerville Hall of Education will take place in the first week of January following the November election, and, and, three, members of the Sayerville Board of Education whose term would have expired by May two thousand and thirteen will continue to serve in office until January two thousand and fourteen organization meeting, and, four, copies of this resolution shall be transmitted to the Middlesex County Clerk, the Middlesex County Board of Elections, the Sayerville Municipal Clerk, the State, the Department of the State Division of Elections, the Executive County Superintendent for Middlesex County, the Department of Community Affairs, the Division of Local Government Services, the New Jersey School Boards Association, and the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. Is there a motion?
Do we open up the public?
No, we have a motion.
Motion second, then you open up to the board, the community. There's no reason, open up to the public.
I'll make a motion.
Second a motion.
And I do wanna, can I add something?
Now you open up, now you can open up to the public, after the board.
But I did wanna say about the Facebook, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that you understand, it wasn't skewed the way that I, the way that it was written. The question went out, should the school board elections stay in April or November? This has been discussed for a year now, I need a vote, when do you want to hold the election? That's how it was written out. It wasn't, we didn't try to skew it one way or the other, there was discussion among parents, and the same thing with last night, I tried very, you know, very hard to keep it neutral, you know, to not give my opinion. And we ended up, by the way, with forty-one, if anybody wants to see it, they can, forty-one people in favor of moving it to November and four people opposed to it.
You wrote the question?
I did. I did, yes.
Anything else? At this time, I'd open up the public on this issue only, I will open up again for any business that we've got, but any public comment on the board moving the elections from April to November?
Good evening, Lucy Bloom, Sayerville Drive, Sayerville Drive, Cheyenne Drive, retired. I would like to say that having sat through that meeting last month with the very passionate parents after the Newtown incident and talking about security, I don't believe that anyone could say we need to put that budget in jeopardy ever again. If the parents want security, and they want a budget that can cover security without being dipped into, cut, picked apart, then we need to have a budget that stands as the board has written it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone? Seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public portion of this issue. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I didn't see, I'm sorry.
Lisa Reback, Southern Wall Street. I approached the board with this last year, I was really, I think I cornered a couple of you in back-to-school night or whatever, and since I became a teacher, I was really confused, why is the school election, why is the school budget even voted on? It's, if you give the, to me, if you ask people if they wanna spend more money, they're gonna say no. And so these school budgets overwhelmingly in Sayerville have been historically shot down. I think they've passed three times since I moved here, ten years ago, so I've always gone out and supported them as a teacher, as a parent who wants, you know, full-time kindergarten and buses and a good education for my kids, but it's been overwhelmingly defeated because there's only a certain type of, you know, if you don't wanna go out and spend more money, then you're gonna go out and vote down the budget. People that don't realize how important their vote is, don't go out and vote. If they're out in November, they're gonna be there, that's where the vote is gonna happen. Again, as it was just spoken, there's a lot of concern by the public about having senior citizens, the public, in school while the schools are in session, and it's a concern, it's a safety concern, it's not something that I've been overwhelmingly concerned about, I feel my kids are safe in the buildings, but again, there are a lot of people that are very concerned about having the public in the schools while the kids are there, it would eliminate half of that incident happening. You're gonna get more voters in November, you have to keep the budget under two percent either way. Either you're gonna ask the public, do you wanna spend the extra two percent, or you're gonna, you know, say, well, this is how it's going to be, this is state policy, and if you're gonna keep it under two percent, then let's at least get that guaranteed two percent every year and not have to worry about the time and the energy and the budget, begging people, please come out and vote, please support the vote. I mean, again, you know, I've been a parent in the district for five years now, and every year, it's, you know, at the PTO meetings, you know, please come out and vote, we need your vote, and you guys could be doing so much more with your time rather than making people to come out and vote and support the budget. Again, somebody else said that having the election in November gives you guys more time to plan the budget for the following year, and I wasn't quite sure about that, I thought, no, okay.
The timelines for the budget preparation did not change when the election, but our adoption stood the same. We just know our final budget sooner.
You would just know that you're guaranteeing that two percent.
We would know it on March twenty-sixth.
Okay, so you would know, like, you wouldn't have to worry about the election in April, and then over the summer you're trying, that's what you were talking about with the teachers, I apologize. I mean, that's about it, I'm gonna stop it.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
You said that you're a teacher, you're, would you teach?
I have an old bridge.
So it doesn't affect you as a teacher here in Sayerville?
Oh, no, no.
But all old bridges move their election.
Well, I'm sorry?
Old bridges move their election.
Yes, but, yeah, that doesn't affect me personally.
For you as a parent, that's your interest for you.
That's, yes, and I-
I'm a parent.
And then that's one, I mean, like, I'm a public school teacher for twelve years now, and again, I just, it was always a problem for me, you know, my aunt is on the board event down, down the shore, and I just, I don't understand why it has to be separate. It just makes sense to me to have everything all together, one budget, you're saving, I think it's what, thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand to run an election, for a separate election?